Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so for our council activity reports, we had our Board of Appeal and Equalization hearing, and I had a park and tree meeting, and then the Stearns County Municipal League meeting last week where we froze out there in the park. Councilman Hersberg?
The port to review meeting was all I had.
Councilman Ranky?
The Board of Equalization, the Joint Planning Board, and then the Planning Board meeting.
All right, Councilman Gilmore?
Board of Equalization, E-DAP, and Stearns County Municipal League.
All right, and then our department heads, we have Andy Sweeney, our fire chief.
All right, for the calls that we've had for March and April, we had seven medicals, two car accidents, three fires, three alarms, and one I have listed as other. I currently have two firefighters that'll be taking EMR training that we're starting at this fall. We currently have four openings on the department. We've started the interview process this week. I've contacted them, and we're gonna get interviews set up. The last two months for training, we've had confined space. We did a May Day search and rescue training, and we also did a wildland fire training. Some of the upcoming events, we have the Backdraft Bash, which will be June 15th at the baseball field, and we're also hoping to do a Saturday training on June 22nd, and that will be involving some houseburns.
All right.
That's all I've got. Any questions?
All right, thank you. Then we will move on to our consent agenda. We have the minutes from the February 19th E-DAP board, and we have updated vouchers totaling $254,298.54. And we have a request for Chief Wagner to attend defensive driving training.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I can.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And then we will move up our new business, since we have a few people that are here to speak tonight. So let's jump ahead to the Town and Country Days activities, if you wanna... Starting on page 30 of our agenda.
Well, everything's gonna be basically the same as last year, for the most part, except for the Backdraft Bash is gonna be on Saturday versus Friday. But parade's gonna be the same. Kids' Day is still gonna be the same on Wednesday, and all permits and everything have been submitted for that. So just checking to see if anybody's got any questions for me.
We have a note on here about communicating with the residents for the parade. Has that been done already?
Not done yet, no. They usually do this the week before, people don't forget about it. But that's my plan, is to do it the week before.
Okay. So we have a wildcard pulling, location permission, and that is for permission to use the city's ambulance garage property, F of Lake Avenue, on Saturday, June 15th. We have the temporary street closing application to close Veterans Drive from Business 23 West to Deekman Drive from Thursday, June 13th, at noon to Saturday, June 15th, at midnight. The parade permit application for the grand parade, Thursday, June 13th, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., and the route is the same as last year. Temporary street closing application for the grand parade, Thursday, June 13th, from 6:00 to 10:00. The temporary street closing application for the staging area, and the kiddie parade that will be held on the Payne'sville High School school grounds, so there's no permit necessary for that. Does anybody have any questions?
I'll make a motion to allow the wildcard to hold their event on the city ambulance garage property, and approve the temporary street closures and parade permit for the 2019 Town and Country Day activities. I can.
All right. We have a motion to allow the wildcard pulling to hold their event on the city's ambulance garage property, and approve the temporary street closures and parade permit for Town and Country Day activities. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Thank you. And then we also will jump down into our old business to letter C. Highway 55 and Lake Avenue, County Road 66, and Highway 55, Business 23, on page 67. And we have a representative from MinDOT here to discuss the concerns about this.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I guess Chuck called me and asked me to attend, so I assume you wanna update on what's happening at the intersection?
Yeah.
The 55, the intersection improvements are going with our 55, Highway 55 construction this summer. And so the project was let April 26th. We have a pre-construction meeting June 20th, and then we expect roadwork to start somewhere around July 8th. And that's, well, I don't know. I mean, the limits are about where Highway 4 is on Highway 55, and they go east of town here ways. So this intersection is included, is part of that whole project. So I would expect the improvements here, not sure what site they're gonna start on, and so we haven't seen their schedule yet, but, you know, by later summer, we'll have some improvements that we talked about earlier. And I do have, if you're interested, I have some, kind of an intersection layout of what we kinda plan to do for improvements. So if I just pass a few out, and then talk about those a little bit. And then I think I hear there was another crash recently or something.
We've had probably three or four, but 55 and Lake Avenue within the last month.
Okay. For some reason, you need to talk to State Patrol, 'cause they don't get into State Patrol's database. So I'm not sure what's happening, because we base everything off of that database. So if they're not reportable crashes or something, they're not showing up on DPS's database. And I have the latest until like yesterday, and I see one in April 5th of 2019, so I'm not sure what's happening there.
My guess is that's when the State Patrol wrote. It could be the fact that we're under 2,500, so they don't take our crash data.
They don't take your crash data?
Yeah, so the state doesn't... And they're not, they don't tally our crash data, because we're under 2,500 people. So I don't know.
I never heard of that. I never heard of that before. So maybe I'll have to, I'll call the captain, Brad Wart, once and see if... 'Cause I heard if it's property damage over 1,500, it goes into their database, no matter what street it's on, state highway, local, local road. So there's something kinda, doesn't seem quite right. And that's where I base all my, and the state bases all their safety expenditures on, stuff like that. So it's kind of important that we know about. So I think, you know, part of our discussion last time was the speed on Highway 55. Because there is a vertical and horizontal curve there, the sight distance isn't the best, even though it kinda meets the minimal criteria for sight distance. I think everybody's agreeable, if we could get people to drive slower, we probably wouldn't have quite as many crashes. And so, you know, part of this effort, what's in front of you, is trying to change the environment there at the intersection, to get the people, at least that are coming from the east, heading west on 55. Kind of a physical notice that there's something going on here, that there's an intersection ahead. And the way that we plan to do that is through a series of fairly minor kinda things. We plan to extend the concrete median back, at least double the distance. And then we plan to take most of that shoulder away. There's a 10 to 12-foot shoulder along that concrete. So you got that shoulder, plus you got your through lane, so it's pretty wide in there. So we're gonna take and reduce that 12-foot shoulder along the concrete median down to a 4-foot shoulder. And then we're gonna take the travel lanes that are 12 feet wide, we're gonna bring them in, squeeze them into 10 feet. Then on center line, we're gonna put a 4-foot buffer, painted buffer, on center line. So we take 2 feet away from each lane, so it'll make each lane's 10 feet. So they'll be squeezed down, they'll feel a little bit more uncomfortable, the road'll get a little narrower. The shoulder's gonna, most of the shoulder's gonna be taken away, the concrete'll be closer to where they're driving. And then we'll have rumble strips down that center line. And this is a strategy that we're doing kinda statewide at kind of rural intersections where we're having a little bit of issue with people not recognizing their intersection, and with an effort to try to say, "There's an intersection up ahead." We'd like to kinda have you slow down. And then we're gonna put streetlights, we're gonna string a couple more streetlights out to the east along that concrete area, 'cause we think some of the crashes are people pulling out, making a left to go east, pulling out in front of westbound traffic. Is, they don't recognize whether the people are in that right turn lane or going straight through. So we're gonna try to make that decision point a couple hundred feet east of where it currently is at, and hopefully the people then who are setting a stop sign can determine that farther down the road, that if they're in the right turn lane or in the through lane. And so that's kind of the... The gist of, you know, what we're gonna try to do is try to slow speeds down here. And then if we can, if this shows a fairly good reduction, then we can kinda look at that whole 50 area, maybe see if we can maybe get that whole 50 area down a little bit through there. So that's the effort that's gonna go on this summer. We talked, I think, with the police department here, and we're also gonna put some, what we call little delineators along that concrete to try to say, "If you're on this side, you're on the right turn lane, if you're on this side, you're kind of in the through lane," to help drivers sit there to kinda determine, you know, if people are gonna take that right or go straight through. So I don't know if there's any questions at all. I think, you know, July, it's July, August, September, sometime around the end of September or something like that. I think, well, you know, we'll have probably the project pretty much completed. So that's what's gonna, it's gonna go on. We, I think we put up, you know, that one flashing sign up there now for the westbound direction. Whether it's done any good or not, I, you know, I don't know, but at least I don't think it's harmed anything. Anything, you know, give them a little extra notice, but... So are there any questions from anybody?
When you extend that, the concrete barrier, are you gonna move that flashing sign?
Yeah, that's right. The commitment was to get that sign in now. We put it pretty much where the concrete began. Once that concrete goes in and gets extended to the east, and that'll come back a couple hundred feet along with the concrete. Yep. That was the intention, yep.
Thank you for listening. And acting on this.
Yeah, I mean, the timing was good, because we had that job coming up. Unfortunately, we don't always could, I mean, can't respond fast in a lot of cases, 'cause we were programmed out three to four years. And something like this, we had the project there, it's, you know, it wasn't that significant of an investment, but at least it's something to see if we can, at least in the interim there. You know, we don't know if this is all, I don't think it's a long-term solution. We still need to look at something further down the road, but we probably got a little bit of time to do some more planning, to see what that might be. I still think, you know, even though the state is not real keen on signalized intersections anymore for safety, I think they do have a place. The, I don't know if I actually talked to you after we did the signal warrant analysis out there, but actually, it kinda surprised me, the traffic on 55 was not high enough. The side street traffic was getting pretty close to meeting eight hours of the 24 hours. But the 55 traffic was, you know, when you add them both together, it was only the lower threshold. If we reduced everything for all the crashes, we could reduce the thresholds 50, down to 56% of the original threshold if we had five right-angle crashes or left-turn type crashes in a year. So I did that, I used that lower of the lowest thresholds, and 55 met for, I think, two of the eight hours. And that's only a threshold of 280 vehicles an hour. So, but traffic has, the last few years, has come up quite a bit, just who knows, like, a lot more cars on the road, and gas is still fairly cheap. It could be, you know, not too long down the road, maybe 55 gets a little bit higher, another 2,000 a day, and it could be over that threshold in a few years.
Do that count on a weekend in the summer?
No, we don't do them on weekends. Yeah, everybody's got problems on weekends. The state has problems on weekends.
Tom?
Yeah?
The other intersection, 55 and 85?
Yeah.
We had, the police had a semi that didn't stop, went right through it, said he never seen the stop sign, never felt the rumble strips, didn't have any recollection whatsoever. Is there, is there an opportunity that we could move our stoplight here down there?
We own this one.
Yeah, and then you would live without this one here?
Yeah.
I'd have to look at the warrants again. Yeah, and we just got recent counts down there, so I could reevaluate that. I know the issue why we took the overhead span wire down, is that was getting hit and taken down. And it was actually lower than what our standard would be, 'cause there's utility lines there, and we gotta be 10 feet below them by code. You know? Otherwise, we probably would've left the overhead flasher up. We could reevaluate that, too. You know, if we talked to the utility company, and I don't know who that is.
XL.
It's Stearns Electric, XL. You know, if there's a way they could even lengthen their poles higher, yet to get their lines up another 10 feet, then we wouldn't have an issue even putting a overhead flashing light back in.
'Cause when we talked about, we didn't know if it was, Public Safety Committee talked about it, and we didn't know if it was a good idea or a bad idea, 'cause now at the four-way, everybody's kinda creeps, they go really slow to make sure there's no cars coming, and then they dash. Where with a stoplight, you're gonna assume people are gonna stop, and you may end up with more crashes. We weren't sure, but we thought that would be cost savings if we could move this one down there.
The thing you might wanna consider is, you know, coming in from the west, heading east, there's the bridge, there's a curve in the road there. Stoplight will probably queue a few more cars up on 55. And so that end of that queue could be a little hard to be noticed by somebody coming in, and they could hit the end of the queue at a fairly high speed. That'd be one thing. I think you probably have a little bit more queuing with a signal than the four-way stop, where they take turns. But we'll, I can look at the actual counts that we did recently, and look at the warrants, and then just to see where we're sitting as far as signal warrants go. And if we meet that signal warrant... We've never done it before, but I couldn't see why we couldn't do that.
I mean, the power's down there, and it would be more beneficial. We don't wanna give up our stoplight altogether, but we, if that would help.
Yeah.
Has there been any more consideration of roundabouts?
At each location, or at?
Well, at one or the other. I mean, at the Lake Avenue and 55, it would at, we still the traffic coming from that direction down.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, I think that's more of a longer-term or midterm solution, roundabout, just because the cost is, you know, 1.5 million. That's a way kind of, that's if you have no right of way, and that kinda stuff. So that's certainly on the table for that intersection. Crashes continue, speeds don't go down. Yeah. I think it's probably more on the table than realignment. Realignment, I mean, it's not a good spot for an intersection to begin with. But a realignment, you know, it'd be, you'd have to bring it further west, get it away from that curve, and it doesn't, it just doesn't seem feasible. Yeah. So right now, we don't have a roundabout, you know, programmed in our program, but, yeah. That's, I think that's certainly one of the options we'd look at there, you know, in the future. Signal light, roundabout, relocation, I kind of, myself, that it's not really a feasible thing to do.
Question real quick, Tom. Last time we talked about that intersection, we talked about the LED stop signs.
The four-way stop one, yep?
Yep. And I thought there was discussion that that was something that was gonna happen, 'cause there was already power there. It's just a matter of swapping out those signs.
Yeah.
Where are we at on that, if we can't get, say, the stoplight or the overhead flashing red light back in?
Yeah. You know, I don't think it'd provide that much more benefit. You know, we got those in a number of areas, and we got, I mean, we have the LED flashers that are there now, the pinnacle ones, you know. So I didn't go ahead and purchase any. You know, I think, was there a question?
I'm just wondering why we haven't moved towards getting those in. I know the rumble strips are there, but especially coming in from the west, I mean, you've got a rumble strip that's, I mean, it's a bad spot, 'cause you've got a bridge right before that intersection. So the rumble strips are back a ways, and then the next set are just on the other side of the bridge. Well, semi's doing, you know, 45, 50, 60 miles an hour through there, because they're not paying attention to the speed limit sign.
Yeah, it's 35, yeah.
It is 35, but that's not...
To show you how good the 35 will do, right, when you lower the speed limit.
So, you know, and I guess that's the other thing on that end, is if that 35 were to be moved back farther more by Fleet Supply to slow that traffic down, 'cause right now, that 35 changeover is just after the highway. So it's just after the highway, on a curve, you know, going into an intersection that, you know, the rumble strips are just, they're awkwardly placed, it seems like.
Yeah, the bridge, I mean, we normally would add our sets a little closer together there.
So, I mean, the semis blowing through there, they can't stop. If they weren't, if they weren't paying attention to see it, their odds of stopping, it's not gonna happen. So I know we had talked about that, I was just kinda curious as to why maybe we hadn't, you know, got those put into place. Maybe they will make a difference, maybe they won't.
Yeah.
But I, you know, a single light flashing, and I'll be honest with you, a good chunk of the time, those lights out there don't work anyways. For some reason, I don't know why. 'Cause you can come in from the west, and then you'll see nothing going, then all of a sudden, surely they're, you know, a couple days later, they'll be working again. But I think every time I've noticed a stoplight, or a stop sign with the flashing LEDs, those stand out a lot more to me than the ones with the single light. That's just me personally, though.
Yeah. Yeah, it is, you know, it's expenditure. I mean, we could certainly allow the city, if the city wanted to do the expenditure, to do it. I could ask the county to see if they wanna share the cost. They, I just don't feel that it would create that much difference. I mean, they're a little different, but after a while, you know, people kinda, I think, kinda tone them out, too, somewhat.
I'll be honest with you, the problem's not the people that go through that intersection daily. It's the traffic that's going through there that aren't from town. That have no idea that that intersection, those stop signs are there. Because the people we stop in sight aren't locals going through that intersection. They're people from up north, they're people from the metro. You know, those are the people, and I mean... To me, I would think those, the cost of those signs are insignificant to the cost of somebody's life.
Right.
What would be the likelihood of moving that lowered speed limit out to the other side of, how about 23?
About zero.
Yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just, I mean, he just said it, you know, I mean, you're just not driving 35 there, it's not a 35 environment. You know, it's just, it's, in between there and the interchange, there's nothing, until you get to the far side of the ramp, you know, then you got, is that where the Fleet Farm is, in the far side, on the west side of the ramp? You know, I expect they slow down there a little bit now, but once they get past there, I mean, you'd be writing tickets 24/7, and, you know, you'd be, every local that went through there'd be getting a ticket every day, and it's, it's just something that we want to entertain, that just breeds disrespect for speed limits in general. You know? That's my position, I've been doing this for 31 years, so, and that's the commissioner's position. So, you know, the speed limit is something that I wish we could slow speeds down by just putting a speed limit sign in, but environment slows them down. The environment is, it's just a rural environment out there, you know, that's the problem.
We could put up one of our flashing speed signs that you got coming.
Yeah, that's always an option, coming into town, a lot of communities are doing that. But is yours on a trailer?
Which ones are you looking at?
No, when we get them ordered, it would be on a pole.
But if they're removable, we could put one down there and try it.
Those actually make a difference.
Here's the problem with that intersection, where that speed limit is. There's really no good place to put that sign. I mean, you might be able to put it on that curve, but again, we're dealing with curves, and we're dealing with environmental factors at that intersection that make it very difficult. It's hard for us to enforce the speed in that area, because there's such a short distance, and you're dealing with a curve. So to be able to actually get what, how fast you're going, coming into that area, it's a difficult place for enforcement. So it's, finding a good spot for that sign is...
The 35 is around the curve, before the curve starts, right, between the ramp and the curve?
Right at the beginning of the curve.
Yeah. So it's good sight to that sign. You're not in the curve, you're underneath the bridge, and, you know, you got fairly good sight to that. Yeah, the dynamic speed feedback signs are very high attention-getters, you know? Especially if you back that up with some enforcement. And we let communities do that. You know, by permit, that's an option, if you wanted to look at that. But I just know that if I submitted something down to the commissioner to extend that speed limit, no. He might even make me raise it, you know, that's always the fear. I know we got it down to 30 through there, but if they see me doing a spot speed study, and they're doing 45 and a 35, and they're saying, "Why are you still having a 30 here, 35 here?" And I say, "Well, because I came to the city council, and they twisted my arm and choked my neck, and we finally agreed to it, and you guys signed it," but they're, you know, they're just... Just not agreeable to doing something that's unrealistic and unreasonable. But, like I said, I mean, we can look at placement, we can move that sign a couple hundred feet either way, without actually changing the authorization, but once we move it further than 300 feet, then we have to legally go and rewrite the authorization and bring it to the commissioner. So if we could, if you think we could place it a little better, if we moved it west or east a little bit, and if you wanted to look at that feed, that speed feedback sign? I mean, if you're ordering a couple of signs, I think, what's your number one safety concern in the city? Is that?
Well, I know those signs, working down in Fairhaven right now, where they're in construction.
Yeah.
And there's two of them down there, and they wake you up.
Yeah, yeah, they certainly do, yeah. Yeah, and every, every one you go to is a little different. They got, you know, white flashing lights, some have a blue flashing light, and...
They always say, "Slow down." They always say, "Slow down, roundabout," I don't know.
I was telling you the other day, I had a little frowny face when you were speeding.
I suppose it adds a lot of expense, but, like, if we move the stoplights, I like where they have the yellow, like at Cold Spring, or between South Haven and Annandale, your yellow flasher that tells you it's turning red.
Yeah, we probably would end up doing one here, at least, uh...
Because that would take care of your west.
Coming in from the west, but, yeah, I don't know if it'd take care of it, I mean, the problem with those things are, is when you get a queue, a car's built up on a red light, that thing flashes when the light's red, okay, and with the curve there, if that queue is backed up, not quite around the curve, but let's say, to where you just can't see them hitting westbound, and then when that light turns green, that light stops flashing. But it takes, if you got ten cars, it might take fifteen seconds for that back car to start moving, so there's fifteen seconds there, that light isn't gonna flash, if somebody's coming in, says, "Well, his light's not flashing," but the back of the car, of the queue of the cars, because it takes every hour, a little bit of time to get moving, he's still sitting there stopped, so, you know...
But you'd have the same thing without the light.
That's correct, yeah. So, you know, there's, it's gonna help you in, in general, but it, it's not a total, total clear out, because ideally, you'd have a smart system and sensor all the way along the road, and tell if those people started moving, it wouldn't stop it flashing, even though the light was green, but, but yeah, that would be, if we did the signal there, we would put one of those in the westbound, or eastbound direction there. Yeah, yeah. So, I'll run the warrants on that, and, and see, just to see where we're at, as far as, I know it still met an always stop warrant, I think last time we looked at it. So, there's still, you know, a fair amount of traffic going across fifty-five, or...
Is there options, Tom, to look at for some kind of better advanced warning system for the four-way stop coming, especially when you're coming from the west?
Yeah. Well, that speedback sign would be good, you know, that would certainly, hopefully, get them to say, "I'm slowing down," and then they would probably have more time to look at that. But the other option, I think we talked about, was possibly getting power off of your lights over there, and then maybe powering, you know, the warning, the advanced stop ahead sign, with a, like a flashing yellow, kind of a thing. It would be on all the time. Those things have a tendency to, after a couple of years, that, you know, at least the locals seem to kind of tune them out, but the non-local traffic probably, probably would be some benefit for them. So, is that something we should look at? I think we talked about that last time, and I think the city was agreeable to, to utilize your power for the streetlights there, but the problem is, streetlights had a photo sensor on them, and so they were only powered during the nighttime, they're not powered during the day. We'd have to get power over there, you know, twenty-four-seven to do that, so we'd have to kind of work through that issue. I think I got the plans there from the city, from the permit, so we could see how we could maybe get power over to that side. So, that means that sign would stay there, but it'd be a, it could either be a, you know, like, we have a powered LED sign, we put a new sign, or you could have that advan, or the, like we have at the stop signs there, just a pinnacle one over the top. So, I think we should probably look at that, I think we talked about that in the past, and, again, I mean, it draws very little power, one of those LED signs. So, that, that would, that would probably help, at least for the non-locals. We'll check, you know, we'll check, see the signal warrants, see if they meet signal warrants, and we'll talk to the county. It would, I mean, we're probably, whether we can use these or not, we'll have to see where the pole placement would be, and how long the mast arms would have to be, they, they might be a little different, just because the geometrics are a little bit different. So, and then sometimes, if you get a longer mast arm, then you need a heftier pole, kind of a thing. So, you know, we'll have to first see if we meet warrants, and then once that's the case, then we'll see what kind of, I spell out the old records, what kind of poles and mast arms we got here. We can see from Google Earth where we'd place them, and then we'd have to see whether or not we can actually reuse it.
Thank you for listening to it.
Yeah. So, I think that's a good step, it'll probably save somewhere in the neighborhood of, well, I'd say probably a good hundred thousand dollars, just for materials, if we can reuse it. A signal system now, with tariffs and stuff, is running over three hundred thousand dollars, used to be about two hundred and fifty, somewhere in that range. So, hopefully, we can get the speeds down on fifty-five, at least coming in from the east, you know, that's our major concern. If we can get speeds down, I think we'll see the crashes come down, they're not gonna be eliminated, and even when you got a signal light, and we still have quite a few crashes at signals, I mean, that's where all my crashes really, if you look at the numbers, that's where they all are, at traffic signal lights. So, you do have, but it does help the right angle ones and the left turner somewhat, when, if you got more than five a year, it's been known to reduce them, increases the rear-end crashes on the higher-speed approach. And, we gotta, I'll talk to, you know Brad Ort, Captain Brad Ort of State Patrol, I'm gonna see him Thursday, so I'm gonna talk to him about that a little bit, with the crash reporting.
I'm guessing there's gotta be something with the system, and it's possible that, depending on how it's getting entered in...
Yeah, you using that new dispatch system?
For, our stuff goes through Main Crash, all our reports go through Main Crash, that we write up there.
That's the same system that DPS is...
Same system everybody else uses.
So, it should come right to my office within a day.
So, unless they're being written as Lake Avenue and Highway fifty-five, or at intersection of Highway fifty-five, and you don't get it, because...
No.
Highway fifty-five's not...
As long as it's spatially coded, when you, when you step out there for a crash, and your GPS coordinate gives you a precise location, that's the same location I get, wherever your car is, where you put that coordinate.
That's where, when we do our crashes, we do it the same way as everybody else, so there's gotta be something within the state system that it's not registering.
Yeah, well, it'd be the DPS system, yeah, for some reason. We gotta get that figured out.
Does that crash that you have, was that a Painesville crash, or was that a State Patrol?
Uh, I don't...
Who wrote it?
I don't, I don't think it says on there who wrote it. April fifth, twenty nineteen, two o'clock, fifty-five and Lake Street angle crash. It doesn't, I don't, I don't recall on this report that it actually says who, who, you know, writes the crash. But we get them for every local street, every, everyone that goes into the system, and we get every single one. So, we'll have to figure that, figure that out, because that's, that's concerning.
Little bit.
Yeah.
So, I can run the crash numbers here for you.
Yeah, I think last time you did that...
Pull up exactly how many we've had.
Yeah. I went through your records from last time we met, and I checked the eight, number eighteen crashes, I think you had three, and I had three listed, seventeen, you had four, and I had three listed, so there's one missed in seventeen, but prior to that, the system that we had didn't show them. So, this new system, you know, they, after a couple of years, I think they got it pretty much figured out. So, yeah, it'd be good if you could, I'll leave you a card again, if you don't have my card, we'll need to work, work through that, to see, see what's, what's happening.
Maybe the highway patrol representative should get in touch with them too, just if there's something mechanically that's being done wrong, I mean, we want to get them in the system right.
Yeah, well, I think you deal pretty closely with the lieutenant in the area, right? I think, I can't remember who that was, last thing that was here.
Filling, filling those things out are pretty much dummy proof, it's a form fill, and once you get all the way through, there's a submit button, so there really isn't, on our end, it's, there's nothing on our end that's gonna be not to happen unless guys aren't doing their reports.
Yeah. The whole purpose of that whole system, DPS upgraded, was to get more accurate information, location, more accurate location, because you used to write reference points down, sometimes, you know, they didn't have a reference point, so they took the nearest intersection and assigned it that reference point, and they send it down to Quarters down in St. Paul, and they looked over the crash, and they adjusted things, this way, right where you are, that's where it's at, everything's submitted, and hopefully, the accuracy is gonna go way up in the future, so. But that, yeah, if you had those three that you mentioned, that would be a good day.
There's at least three or four, I think the last one was May fifth, somewhere in there.
Okay.
And that one was actually written by the State Patrol, so if you don't have that one, not sure why.
Yeah, yeah. So, we'll have, you know, we'll kind of work on that with State Patrol, and then our people that are kind of working on the, getting the database from State Patrol over into ours, because there's been a lot of issues with the way they're coding things now, and stuff like that. So, if we're missing something, it's probably a good exercise, we go through to, to see if there's some issues in the way the stuff is translating and so forth. Are they all the same, same type, pretty much, left turn to go eastbound and then westbound hitting them?
Uh, one was a left turn, going eastbound, the other one, guy took a left turn on the Lake Avenue, in front of a vehicle going westbound.
Yeah, that's a common one, too.
Let's see, not sure what the, I wasn't on the day that the other one happened, that the State Patrol wrote, I think there's one more in there somewhere, that I wasn't involved in.
Okay, kind of fits the pattern.
Again, what we're finding is, I mean, some of it's driver inattention, they're just not paying attention there, but, I mean, you've got, you know, a downgrade curve, you got a curve coming the other way, both of those roads leading into that are curved roads, leading up to that point, and depending upon the time of day, there's a lot of impatient sitting at that area, so people misjudge things and pull out.
Yeah. Yeah, if we ever put a signal light out there, we'd, we'd have to rebuild that whole intersection, we'd have to build it, so each approach has its own left turn lane, so there'd be a fair amount of reconstruction, just, it's not just popping a signal in there with the geometrics, we'd have to get left turns on fifty-five, we'd have to get left turns on the cross street, separate them out from the through and the right turn traffic and stuff.
We're good.
Thank you for coming out tonight, and for giving us the update. All right, next on our agenda is, we'll go back up to the new business letter A easements. Ron, or Chuck, do you want to give us an update on that?
Yeah, near Packet, our two permanent storm sewer easements. Essentially, when we construct our new pond just north of the, north of the railroad tracks, there'll be a pipe extended from our new pond up to the existing pond, that's located just south of the Crow River. In order to do that, we cross the city's property, that's just north of, north of the pond, as well as Jerry Mayor's property, so in order to do that, we would need these, to execute these two permanent easements. There are copies of maps that, that show the, the proposed easements on pages, page fourteen of the Packet shows the one across the city property, and page twenty-three shows the one across the north side of Jerry Mayor's property.
I'll make the motion to approve the absolute irrevocable and perpetual utility easements agreement between and for the city of Painesville, or for the city of Painesville, and the city of Painesville, and Gerald and Mary Mayor. Seems like a lot of city of Painesville.
And one of those easements is from the city to itself, but, I mean, we're anticipating that we're gonna sell those lots in Minneville there at some point, and we just want to memorialize the existence of that perpetual easement across there before it's sold, so we don't have to deal with another property owner someday down the line. There is a lot of city of Painesville.
Okay. Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the absolute and the irrevocable and perpetual utility easement agreements between and for the city of Painesville, and the city of Painesville, and Jerry, Gerald and Mary Mayor. Is there any further discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And page twenty-four of the agenda is the rehab of well number seven.
Okay, um, second bullet, that's, well, number seven and eight, they were both installed as a direct result of the benzene contamination to well number four. Well four was taken offline, PCA, they gave us the option at that time, and we chose to drill two new wells at that time. And well seven, just for information, is about a hundred and ten feet deep, twelve-inch casing, with about fifteen inches of screen, and it's got a twenty horsepower motor in it, and it produces on the top end of about five hundred gallons a minute. Currently, it's running about three hundred and fifty, so obviously, we have seen some loss of capacity in there. Normally, they recommend that wells be rehabbed approximately every ten years, however, we don't run our wells, and we have enough capacity that they only see roughly eight to ten hours of runtime per day. So, obviously, we were able to stretch that out to almost twenty years, so I think we've done quite well with it, but at this point, the plan would be to do well seven this year and well eight next year. And that was the recommendation from the Public Works Committee, and, and we award to trout companies in the amount of the fifteen, two twenty-six there.
Was this something that you'd already budgeted for, for this year?
Yes, this is, that would come out of the budget.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the quote from Trout Well Companies in the amount of fifteen thousand, two twenty-six, seventy-five, for the rehab of well number seven. Second.
All right, so motion to approve the quote from Trout, Trout Well Companies in the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars, seventy-five cents for the rehab of well number seven. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
And your honor, on their next item, the Centerport, Centerpoint Energy Franchise Ordinance, I'm requesting that to be tabled till your next meeting. I am waiting for feedback, there's a change that Bill found, that if we at some time decide to put a... that if we at some time decide to put a franchise fee in place, then Center Point no longer has to pay for any permits from the city. So Dave Long and I are doing phone tags, so I'd prefer if we wait to see what he has to say on that, if you don't mind.
Okay, do we need a motion or are we just?
Nope, you can just take it.
So we will table that till our next meeting. And then moving into our old business, we have the fee schedule, fee changes on page sixty-one of the agenda. There's attached resolution two thousand nineteen dash eighteen amending the license and fee schedule. The fees that are being recommended by the Budget and Finance are changing the administrative fine late fee, which is currently none. And then first reminder would be five dollars, second reminder would be ten dollars, third reminder would be going to court. The assessment search is currently no fee for that, and we would propose a twenty dollar per search fee. And the transfer of water and sewer accounts is currently twelve fifty, and we would propose a twenty dollar fee for that. And then the snow removal and downtown parking and truck parking, right now, it's ten dollars for the second offense, and we're proposing a fifteen dollar for the second offense.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash eighteen, amending the license and fee schedules.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on that one? All right, so we have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash eighteen, amending the license and fee schedule, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. All right, the airport hangar. Ron or Chuck, do you want to give us an update on that?
Yes, as we've mentioned at past council meetings, we did reopen bids back in March for the new ten-unit T hangar for the airport. The bid came in at one million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars, which was over the estimate. The bid was broken into three different schedules. Schedule one was all the civil work or the site work as well as the footings. Schedule two was the building itself. And then Schedule two bid alternate A was adding, basically adding heat to all the units and insulating all the units, well. The bump bid for Schedule one actually came in underestimate, and it's basically the building that has came in significantly higher. As the council may recall, this is actually the second time we've bid this project. We bid it last year, and then now we bid it this spring again, and it came in very similar both times. So basically, where we sit right now, the work associated with Schedule one and two is eligible for our federal entitlement funding, which is basically, we get ninety percent funding from the federal grant and five percent from the state grants. So ninety-five percent of the project is covered by grants for Schedule one and two. Schedule two, the bid alternate A, heating the units, would be a local cost, so that'd be a total city cost if that portion was pursued. However, given where the bids came in, we've been working with Voss, who was the low bidder, to see if there's ways to reduce the cost and get it within our budget on where our federal entitlements are, within the amount of federal entitlement dollars we have. And based on our discussions, if we reduce the ten-unit T hangar to an eight-unit T hangar, and then only put interior wall liner panels on one side of the partitions rather than both, you know, we could get it, we could reduce that cost by approximately one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, which would get us into where our funding levels are for the hangar. So with that, if the council did want to continue to move forward with this project, we'd recommend Schedule one and Schedule two work be awarded to Voss in the amount of one million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars. However, there would have to be contingent upon a formal change order being executed simultaneously to reduce the scope and cost of the project. As well as the first step in the process would be securing our federal and state grants. So we won't even do the contracts until our federal and state grants, kind of grievance were secured, so.
Just to clarify, if you make those changes, then is the whole project covered by the state and federal grants, or do you still have that part of it that's not?
It's always going to be ninety-five, five, so the city's share is always going to be five percent.
But the bid alternate A part of it, I mean, there would be a component of that, is that covered by that?
The bid alternate A, the, whether we move forward with bid alternate A is a city decision, that would be a hundred percent city cost regardless.
Okay.
And given the amount of the bid, you know, I guess it's at the discretion of the council, but it did come in very high to heat the hangar.
I guess at this point, it would be our recommendation not to do the heating of the units.
I have a question. Is there much demand for heated units?
Believe it or not, yes, there is, but at that cost, I don't think we can justify it, especially being it's a local cost. Initially, I think when we started out with this process, it was federally funded, and then...
It was good, but we had hoped against, originally, the state possibly would participate that, however, that changed last year, before we bid last year, changed, that'd be a local cost.
I think if the pilots do want to heat these units, I guess they will have to, you know, forward some of their own funds for that, and equals our thinking at this time.
So they could put their own infrared or whatever, LP tank and...
We will have gas up to this unit.
Okay.
Yeah, there will be natural gas up to the building.
So you could meter it, they'd pay for the heat and put in their own heaters.
We would have to come to some kind of agreement with them for that, yes.
That sounds reasonable.
A question on this, with not doing both walls, would that make us have to reduce the rent on these because they're not as complete as our older units?
They'll still be fully enclosed, it's just on one side, you'll see the wall structure.
So you'll see the studs on one.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
Basically, the interior partition walls originally had liner panel on both sides of the wall. Now they'll just be on one side of the wall, so they'll still be completely separate units.
So Ron, you're going to charge the same rent as the other units?
I was hoping that we would be going up with all of them here.
We still have a waitlist?
Yes.
And this may not be easy, but can I ask a question? Without that second wall liner, does it matter for the building code? We're good with that?
I do not believe so, no. I can confirm that.
Any other questions?
Then I move to award the bid to Voss Plumbing and Heating in the amount of one million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars for Schedule one and Schedule two, contingent upon the change order being executed simultaneously to revise the scope of the project, with an eight-unit T hangar with wall liner panels placed on one side of the interior partition walls and contingent on securing the necessary federal and state grants. Second.
All right, so we have a motion, I'm not going to repeat all that, as on the action sheet, page sixty-four, awarding the bid to Voss Plumbing and Heating. Is there any more discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
And I'll make the motion to not award the bid for Schedule two bid alternative A.
Second.
All right, and then we have a motion to not award the bid for Schedule two bid alternate A. Any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. All right, and then we will move on to hiring the part-time public works employee, page sixty-eight, our agenda. Ron, would you like to give us an update on that?
Sure, Renee and I interviewed Rick Hanson here, and we had one other candidate who did not show up for the interview, so. Renee did appoint this gentleman last week, and so far, he has worked out extremely well. And he has accepted the twelve sixty-seven per hour for thirty-two hours a week. And thus far, it's looking very good. So we would recommend him, hire him for the thirty-two hour per week position.
Can I make a motion to approve the hiring of Rick Hanson for the part-time public works position for eleven hundred and twenty hours per year with pay to be grade one, step one, twelve sixty-seven on the two thousand and eighteen labor agreement, with his first day starting to be May twentieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the hiring of Rick Hanson for the part-time public works position for eleven hundred and twenty hours per year, pay grade one, step one, twelve sixty-seven an hour on the two thousand and eighteen labor agreement, with his first day to be May twentieth, two thousand and nineteen. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And our last one is an old business, our housing incentive. Renee, do you want to give us an update?
I'd love to. Right now, our housing incentive program, we only have one application left. And so I did take to the EDAP board, since they've been financing it out of the revolving loans, to do ten more. We also discussed, we have someone interested in building patio homes, but to rent them out. And would they be eligible for an incentive, housing incentive? The goal is to get the vacant lots filled, is the number one goal. With that being the number one goal, the EDAP Commission Board did say that they would go along with, they would recommend doing ten incentives of waiving just the water and sewer hookup and the boulevard tree, but there would be no twenty-five hundred dollar payment, since they are not being sold. So the recommendation to council, this is really, really stimulating. People are very much interested in this, they make sure that if there's any left. We had one lady that there was only two left, and she called Jennifer and said, "Put me down, I'll bring in my contractor." So EDAP is recommending that we do ten full packages for anybody who builds a new house with the twenty-five hundred and ten additional incentives if someone to buy, to build, single-family homes for rent. This would not apply to apartments or multifamily structures, single families.
Twenty-five hundred is only owner occupied.
Right, yep.
That's right.
Any questions?
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve ten more complete package housing incentives and ten additional incentives to only waive the water and sewer hookup fees and receive the free boulevard tree up to two hundred and fifty dollars.
We amend that to add in the complete housing package would be for individuals who build and occupy their own home?
That was in the first ten, that's part of that contract, you have to be owner occupied to get that twenty-five hundred.
Yes, but do we have a, do we have anything differentiating the ten additional, that those are homes that are being built to rent? Because that's what I'm asking.
That were the ten additional incentives to waive only the water and sewer would be the unoccupied, owner unoccupied. The first ten, it says complete package, which which has to be owner occupied, because that's in our little contract.
Okay.
And the second ten doesn't get the twenty-five hundred, which would be for rentals.
Single-family rentals?
I'm just wondering if we can differentiate that in the motion, so that it's not like, once those first ten are gone, people can come in and get the second ten, even if they're owner occupied, makes sense.
Okay, I get what you're saying. Motion to approve ten more complete package housing incentives that are owner occupied and ten additional incentives that are unowner occupied, to only waive the water and sewer hookup fees or receive the free boulevard tree, two fifty? That, that clear?
Yeah.
I get where you're coming from, it's like, can I offer another friendly amendment to that? For the non-owner occupied, can we add that it's a single-family home? Because we, I thought we discussed, we don't want this to be an apartment.
Do you want to amend your motion again?
What about twin homes? Is that, most of those lots won't facilitate one, but...
Like townhomes and so forth?
Well, a twin townhome. I believe Voss is building one right now up on top.
My understanding on those, though, he's selling them.
Right.
This other gentleman is looking at seven of the empty lots to build patio homes and rent them.
Right.
I don't, it's your concern.
Only if they were to build lots and want to build something like, a high-density building, you know, like Holden Park or, you know, where they have a cluster.
No, I'll amend it for the single-family homes, because if you're going to do any more bigger stuff than that, then then you've got to play the game.
Well, second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve ten more complete package housing incentives for owner occupied homes and ten additional incentives waiving the water and sewer hookup fees and receiving the free boulevard tree up to two hundred and fifty dollars for non-owner occupied, single-family homes.
Very good.
Is that correct?
That should be long enough.
All right, did you get all that? All right, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Okay, and then we are on to our informational. We have an update from the Highway Twenty-three Coalition. And that's, it's like things are actually being bumped up ahead of schedule. Some of that construction along Highway Twenty-three. We have the April Liquor Store Reports. And then there is, uh, is that Soil and Water Conservation District, an invitation for representative from our city to attend that tour on June fourteenth. I think registration is, registration deadline, I think, is next week.
Is there anyone interested in attending?
Which one's that one?
It's on page seventy-nine.
Is there a cost to that?
No, I don't.
I think there's something going on that day, isn't there?
What date is it?
Friday, June fourteenth.
I'm not in town, it's town and country days.
I'm not going to be in town that day either. Anyone else interested in attending that? If so, maybe let Renee know in the next couple of days. I had a cutoff on there for registration, but...
June third.
June third, okay. And then we have the... We don't actually have the March two thousand and nineteen investments.
They're on the website.
Okay. Oh, yeah, those are on the city website, and then in our updated agenda, we have the June and July meeting schedules on the back there. And unless anybody has anything else, then we will adjourn.